Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Foxborough Board of Select Meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, at the High School Media Center. The agenda tonight, 6:30 executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Attorney John Davis is present. Insurance, liberty contract ratification. Approved executive session minutes at 7:00 PM. BOs discussion, town warrant articles 26 and 27. 7:15 Southeastern Regional High School District FY15 budget. 7:40 PM Roger Hill Oak Street action. 8:15 Jack O'Leary Town cleanup. 8:30 PM Bill Uckner, Bill Casbatter, Randy Scollins, Club Color Town Hall lease RFP. James, you want to lead the pledge, please?
Sure. I'm glad you're leading. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I will take a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Attorney John Davis, insurance. Number two, library contract ratification. And number three, approve executive session minutes. We'll adjourn from executive session to come into open session.
A second.
All in favor? Roll call, John?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Chinny?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Okay, we'll be back by 7 o'clock, I hope. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Okay, we're back from executive session. We're going to move on the agenda, and it's town warrant articles 26 Scenic Roads and 27 Complete Streets. Who wants to update the board on these two articles?
I'll let you know, since the last time we met and talked about that, you had asked Planning and Roger Hill to go back, and there was some disagreement about how to handle all those issues. And since then, the Planning Board has had their public hearing. And Roger, if I'm incorrect, as I think you know as well, Roger's helping the audience, they voted to move forward in favor of the scenic road bylaw, but to take no action on the complete street bylaw. So, I believe you guys can have a discussion on that, and...
Well, wasn't there, didn't they trim down the number of roads that were going to be in the scenic road bylaws? There's, I forget, there's not...
Can you come to the mic?
I thought they, I thought they did take some out.
Can somebody come to the mic?
That's all I know is... Yeah, that's, I mean, they, they trimmed the streets down. And they, they did a little survey with all the neighborhoods that were included in those streets, and they trimmed those down, so... But they voted unanimously to support that article.
Yeah, some were, some were approved at the last meeting, but some were deferred until the next meeting, I think, if I got it right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So, more discussion amongst the board on this? Roger, oh, please, Bill, come forward.
I'm actually here to represent my son, who owns a house on Carpenter Street. The issue that he and, actually, two or three of his neighbors that I talked to today have with the scenic road thing for Carpenter Street and West Leonard, the question really is, when you read the bylaw, it says it's going to be for environmental, historical, or scenic. And the real question is, what on Carpenter Street meets any one of those three requirements? I think the, the survey they did, which I know it's, it's hard to do surveys in, in any town, but there's 21 houses on the street. I believe they had seven, who said they might be in favor of it. And I'm not sure how well it was really depicted as to what the issues around the scenic road are. The four people that I spoke to, that are all in the end where my son lives, you know, basically don't see the benefit in creating the scenic road for Carpenter Street or West Leonard. West Leonard, half the houses are just fences on the backside that people have put to, you know, to protect their backyards from view. And on Carpenter Street, there are virtually, and Roger can probably confirm this, there are virtually no town trees that are involved that you'd be protecting, and there's no stone walls that you'd be protecting. So, I'm trying to figure out exactly why, you know, unless you had unanimous consent on the neighbors, why you would actually go forward with making these into scenic roads, when they don't even seem to meet the bylaw requirements. And again, you know, I know a couple of them, my son inclusive, does not believe that this is a good use of what that street should be, so... And one of my issues, to be honest, and I know Roger brought this up before, but if you actually look at the drainage issues on Carpenter Street and West Leonard, something happened a while ago during construction on those roads, and it broke down the drainage system. Right now, the, the two manholes or catch basins that are right in front of my son's house don't work at all. And when it, when it rains, this is what happens to his yard, and it's all coming off the street.
He has a pool.
Yeah, that's, luckily, his foundation's a little higher, so it doesn't go into the house. But that was on a, the, one of the neighbors took that picture, and her yard does the exact same thing. So, there's got to be some major roadwork done before you go anywhere. So, to Roger's point, I think, which he made to the Planning Board in the past, was at least get the roadwork done and corrected before you even push forward with something like this, because otherwise, he's going to have to file for everything to get this stuff done.
Bill, do you know why Carpenter Street was chosen to be on the list?
I have no idea. But like I said, I don't see how it could be any of the, there's no, what's historic about Carpenter Street?
Are these for the record, Bill?
Yeah, if you want them, that's fine. We can plenty.
All right. Well, you know, the last time we had this discussion in front of the board, and that's why we kind of put a couple of things off, and I said, "Everybody go chat and come back," when basically I meant the Planning Board and the TPW Director Roger Hill. Now, we've got a third party coming in. And I was kind of hoping people would come forward, instead of having to go to town meeting and have a long drag-out, you know, gunfight about this thing. So, it, it, it sounds to me like it's, it's kind of premature, the town meeting. Every time we bring it up, somebody brings something else up, you know, and some good points here. There's no stone walls, there's no town trees, the drainage is a mess, and we're going to make a scenic road, and then we're causing ourselves a whole lot of more paper issues in departments and more meetings or something. Maybe that, this whole article should be put off into the special, when these people can pan out the situation.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. I hate to throw everything out because of one comment, and I talked to Bill earlier, so I understand. But you look at the roads that we're talking about, Bentonwood, Carpenter, Chestnut Cross, Maple, South Cross, designating West Street from South Street to rent them. Now, all of these, all the, the, not the abutters, the homeowners are notified. All of the cards returned by the landowners were all positive, except for Leonard and West Leonard. And those were, seemed to be taken off of the list. So, I don't hear, and your son is on...
Carpenter.
Carpenter.
He's on the corner of Carpenter and West Leonard.
Okay, so he either didn't put in a card, or didn't...
They only received seven out of the 21 they received cards from.
So, seven came back, and seven said, "No problem," and then the rest?
And I know, like I said, I know four of them will be at town meeting to say their piece.
Are you basically saying that the cards that they received, they probably treated as junk mail and just didn't even look at them?
Well, I think, you know, my son's young, and...
I'm not, I'm not saying your son...
You didn't really understand what the thing was requesting.
But I mean, it happens. People get mail, and they're like, "Ch-ch-ch."
And then the completed streets, nobody, there was no comments whatsoever on them, on the discussion with, with Roger Hill's stuff.
But again, I would fall back to the simple question. What, what on these streets meets this requirement in your bylaw?
Leonard Extension is, is a newer development from Leonard Street.
So, it's not historic?
It's got four or five little small colonies that we...
Did you ask the planning board that, Bill?
No, to be honest with you, my son called me last night, said he can't make it tonight.
Come on forward, Larry, if you're going to speak, please.
You know, but if it, if it has an environmental impact, I, I don't know what it is. If it has a aesthetic value, I can't see what that is. And if it's, you know, to preserve historic value, there's only two older houses on the street that...
How does the scenic road bylaw affect the street itself? I know it protects trees, and it protects stone walls, but how does it affect, you know, catch basins?
That's all, that's all it essentially...
Right, it doesn't affect catch basins. I think that would be the complete streets.
I mean, if, if your son doesn't have any trees in the right of way or stone walls, it won't have any effect at all on his property. So, I'm, I'm acting as, just like Bill, as a parent. He's speaking for a son who owns the house, and I'm speaking for Jen, who did all the research for the, for this particular article. And if you look at the art, at, at the law, there is no criteria for scenic roads. There's what it protects, but no criteria for choosing a road to be a scenic road. In fact, there are a number of towns in Massachusetts that have designated all their roads as scenic roads. And I, I think at the end of the day, it's just a way for people to protect the land that they, they would like to think that they own, but actually is in the right of way. If they want to put a tree there, if they want to put a stone wall there, it protects them. So, that's, that's essentially all it does.
Do you have any idea how Carpenter Street was chosen?
Yeah, what Jen did was she went off, and she found a lot of very, you know, historic maps, maps that went back to the 1800s, and she digitized them and put it all into a GIS system. She probably found seven or eight different databases, some of which were, you know, very old, that she had to enter by hand, others which other people had, had already digitized. And she laid that out and then overlaid it all on a digitized map of Foxborough. And that's how she was able, most of them were, most of it was because of historical reasons. You know, that, these are, these are roads that have probably been around for a very long period of time. At one time, they really were kind of the epitome of what the experience of living in Foxborough was, very tree-lined, residential, you know. I think as someone from the Planning Board said, Foxborough used to be called the Tree Town, or something like that. I mean, but we've lost all that. If you go down a lot of our streets, you know, it's kind of been just clear-cut, out to the right of way. And, you know, it's unfortunate, and I think people reflected that when they talked about, when they, when they did the exercise for the master plan. People wanted to do something to try to get Foxborough at least a little bit back to the way that it used to be. So, this was a reaction by the Planning Board to try to do that.
Chinny?
I was just going to say that the, on the Planning Board agenda for Thursday, I think there's some of these streets, and I can't remember the names, but just so happens, the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board has just walked in. So, maybe he can explain more. But I'd just like to make a comment. To me, scenic roads is, it's not really defined, but you kind of know, when you see a scenic road, you know it's a scenic road, and you know when it's not a scenic road. So, I don't know how much that falls in the definition, you know, but anyway.
Well, I hear stories from Leonard Street from people that grew up on that road. They said that the trees encompassed the whole road.
It's like a tunnel.
It was a tunnel. And the Common Street in Walpole was very similar to that. But the trees, they get old, and they died, and they're falling down, there's stumps in the way, and you can't plant trees because there's a stump the size of this table between the sidewalk, the house, and the road. And if you're trying to take it out, you're taking up half the road and things. So, it's just, I, you know, I know that there's a tree watering in town still, and there's a tree committee in town. They try and goes around and kind of catch up with it. It's kind of very coincidental. My son asked me about the VFW Parkway the other day, when we went to Boston. He said, "Dad, these trees were all perfect." And I says, "'Cause there's committees that take care of this." And he, and he was kind of enthusiastic about it, and I was just kind of trying to explain to him how it works. It's not just about being on this board. Everybody does their share. But, I mean, Leonard Street, it's a shame, the trees are all, they're gone, and, you know, it's, it's a shame. But how do you replant them, especially, you know, 200-year-old oak and maple trees? It's kind of like, gone.
It's an investment in the future.
Yeah.
If you want to...
Right. So, what would be making it a scenic road now, then would have been a really great idea. And I, I'm not opposed to the whole thing, I just think it needs more discussion. That's all I'm saying, down the road. And Bill, I'll leave it to you now.
Okay, first off, I had no intention of showing up tonight, and I just, because I have no life, I was channel surfing.
No Bruins game for you?
Yeah, well, after Bobby Uff, who could, you know, I kind of lost interest.
Who's he?
First off, the Planning Board didn't dream up this stuff, although we've been accused of it. We aren't, this isn't to subduge people's rights or whatever. This is a direct result of citizen input. And while I appreciate the dialogue that's taking place at this table, the real place for the dialogue is a town meeting, which is why we sponsored the articles. And yes, we have had all of the public hearings. We had, if you look at the ratio of people that have attended town meeting and the people, the ratio of people to vote, we had an extremely high percentage of folks return surveys. So, I wouldn't besmirch our results, given the attitude of a lot of folks of not to get involved, and these folks took the time to participate in the process. It is our intent and our mission to bring the results of the master plan surveys that have been done. And right up front, when we went for funding everything else, we said it was going to be requesting input from the citizens to present a town meeting to see if the town as a whole buys into any of this. And as Mrs. Coppola said, we, there's four streets in particular, and I'm going to get shocked because I can't remember them all, but it was Sherman, Leonard, West Leonard, and Garfield, I believe, are the ones that we didn't have a substantial majority of the street saying they were for it. And so, we didn't even vote to bring those forward, because being true to what we said, if we had significant street opposition, we weren't even going to go forward with it. Those, so we're revisiting those, the members are out with flashlights and little safety helmets checking the streets tonight, I'm sure. And we'll be discussing that and voting on that. But we said all along that we aren't trying to jam something down. This is a request of the citizenry. And we expect at town meeting that we'll go forward with the, with the articles that we voted to go forward with, and we may pull some back. But the ones we go forward with, we expect there'll be some, some debate. It may or may not pass. This is not going to be the first time we're going to be presenting articles that are going to cause some discussion. But the articles will be presented because of the input of the citizens, not because we dreamed them up. And if it goes forward, great. If it doesn't go forward, great. But we feel we have to be true to what we told folks that we were going to do with the monies that we were spending and, and with their input. There, you know, just to correct something, there is no, nothing in this, in this scenic bylaw process that is going to slow stuff down. Will it require the town to do its due diligence and document stuff? Absolutely, much of which the town should be doing anyhow. So, it's, it's not a burden on the, on the town department. We've made absolutely sure of that. We've actually, Sharon has gotten, found out from National Grid, there's a, there's a fund so that we can apply for, for monies to resupplement a tree count that we've been diminishing over the years. We, in fact, were a tree city. We had great hoopla about it, we had banners, we have, at the old, the former Board of Select meeting room, there's still a plaque up proclaiming Foxborough a tree city. So, it's nothing new, and it's, it's just part of the Planning Board process to go forward. And we hope, well, actually, regardless of, you know, what, what this board determines, the vote is going to be to support or not, we're still going to go forward, present it, because that's what the folks asked us to do. And at town meeting, we'll see what they do, you know. And we, we encourage any and all participation, any dissenting participation.
Okay, James?
Yeah, just a quick, on process, I don't want people to think it was, because we got a memo from Sharon talking about postcards. It wasn't just postcards out, postcards back, and that's how you made your decision. I, I do have some friends on Cross Street. So, when that first came up, there was a lot of, "What does it mean, and am my rights going to be taken away?" Did you participate, or did the Planning Board participate in a neighborhood meeting where you invited people and talked about this? Was that just one isolated issue?
We sent them all notices of when the hearings were going to, were going to be, and we timed them all within five minutes of each other, which, as you know, with a public hearing, is a gutsy thing to do. And so, we, we, as we got to the opening of each one, we opened it so that we had them open all at the same time. The general discussion called, the caveat was for scenic roads in particular, and then the streets individually. And then, as we answered all of the questions of folks on that street, we then moved on to the next one.
Gotcha.
And then we went back through. The, for example, on West Street, we had a faux pas that we sent out, I don't know, I forget how many numbers, the numbers of the starting of houses that we sent out. And it wasn't until a resident came in and said, "I'm all for it, but I live closer to South Street, and you're only talking about..."
Mill Street.
Yeah, Mill Street forward, or whatever. And we said, "You're right." You know, so it did skew the numbers. And so, the neighbors that came out, we had a discussion about that. We actually pushed that back for discussion purposes at town meeting from south all the way through. A representative of Normandy Farms was there, supportive of it, but concerned that it was going to impact some roadwork that the town wanted to do there. And as we talked through the process, some of his concerns were, as a matter of fact, I didn't realize that that was going on, and I, I did a, "What if it was going to include this corner with bonds and, and walls and stuff?" And he said, "Well, funny, you mentioned that, that's exactly what we're talking about." And, and we walked through the process with him to show how it's beneficial to the process for the town to look at those stone walls and take into the plans that if you take down a wall like that, you need to feather it back, blend it into the architecture, whatever, rather than wait till it's all done, and then the citizens committee go, "What the hell happened to our, our wall there?" So, it's, it's all about openness, it's all about trying to be inclusionary, and it's all about making sure that we, as a, as a town, follow the guidelines and bylaws that we expect others to follow. Simple as that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, two years ago, after a couple hurricanes, everybody wanted to be treeing town down.
There you go.
I know we want to save them all again.
I think that's why National Grid coughed up the money for here. Going 15 grand.
So, you're saying you want to have the debate on the town meeting floor?
As to like, any, any other article?
Yeah, actually, Mark, I, I agree that it should stay, you know, stay on the warrant.
You know, I just thought maybe we'd give it a little more time. Seems to be some controversy here, but...
I can understand the controversy over the, the complete roads.
And you did vote to not support that at this time?
Complete roads, we pulled that back because we didn't want, believe it or not, we didn't want to present a divisive article at town meeting. So, we pulled that back because we, we think there's more homework to be done on that. We want to make sure that it's not a burden to the town, that if there's additional monies, it can be granted. So, we pulled that back.
That'll still be on the warrant, and so you just can vote not to support it, and, and, you know, probably go to no action at town meeting.
We're going to make that motion, yeah.
Okay. So, you plan to make a presentation on the scenic roads bylaw?
Oh, you bet your bippy.
Okay. It'd be good, because it's been on the books for a long time, and very few folks understand it.
Actually, I think I got to get a hold of the moderator, because I think rather than to make the pitch at each one of them, we'll have to do his bidding, but I don't know if it'll be at the beginning, when committees do a report, or before these articles all roll out, that we'll make a pitch just to explain the process, how we got to where we are, so we don't have to do it for each of the articles.
I'll set you on.
Yep.
And Larry, I do want to thank your daughter from the board for doing what she did. It was a wonderful article. Thank her for us, please.
Please, sir.
Okay, I'll detain the motion.
Okay, I move that we, I move that the Board of Selectmen include Article 26 Scenic Roads on the town warrants.
They've all been included already, and you need to sign a warrant.
Yeah, these are...
Oh, it's supported, okay. We'll change that to support the Article 26 Scenic Roads.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next motion, John, please, to not support Article...
Oh, all right. I move that the Board of Selectmen move no action on Article 27 Complete Streets.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, at 7:15, of course, Southeastern Regional School District FY15 budget.
Good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
How are you?
Did you get a copy in your package?
Perfect, great, thank you.
I'm Mark Morris, the school business manager of Southeastern Regional.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. And the town representative on the school committee, Steve Uden.
Good evening, everybody.
In your package, as I've said, some, you've heard the presentation before, there's a lot of information here. I'll hit on some of the keynotes, I think, that are important in the package. But if there are any questions or anything you want me to get a little deeper into, feel free to ask as I go along.
Proceed.
If you want to just, I'm not sure how you have it printed out, if it's electronic. On the second page, the enrollment data is where I'll start. So, overall, for FY15, Southeastern's enrollment is up 14 students, from FY14 to 1,356 students. And in the town of Foxborough, the increase is from 17 to 19, so two students. And that represents 1.4% of the total population at Southeastern Regional from the town of Foxborough. On the very next page is the FY15 budget summary. So, the foundation budget for Southeastern Regional FY15 is $21,227,292. From that amount, $13,500,708 comes from state aid. I'm sorry. And $7,726,584 comes from local assessments. And $115,325 comes from our E&amp;D account, our excess and deficiency, with the town's the same as the rainy day account that you have, the rainy day fund, giving us the total foundation budget of $21,227,292. The next section I just want to draw your attention to is student transportation or regional transportation. As you know, the state had said they would fund regional transportation at 100%. But again, they had that little caveat there in the law that, one, the state appropriations are available. Since inception, the state has not funded regional transportation at 100%. They've been as close as 85 to 86%, and they've been as low as 21, 22%. So, the key there is when you do see a legislature's, your senator, your congressman, your representatives, let them know that regional transportation is important to the town. Because if it was funded at 100%, there'd be no local assessment, any of the communities, for regional transportation. So, you can see that our cost of transportation is $1,313,379. From the state aid, we receive $757,299, and the difference coming from local assessments at $556,080. If we do receive more local tra, or regional transportation, that money would go back to the communities based on the enrollment to the school. So, again, that is just an important situation that we, again, it's supposed to be funded at 100%. It's not funded, and it affects the towns and the city that send students to Southeastern Regional.
Okay.
Our capital costs are $436,875. If you do recall, about three years back now, we came to the towns, the city, and we did a renovation expansion project at the school. That's our bond payment. And as we said, we weren't going to increase any assessments to the towns, which we haven't increased or assessed one dime of that payment to the town. That money comes from local assessments of $192,000, which have been the same over the last 15 to 20 years from the towns and the city, and the difference from our excess and deficiency account of $244,875 to make that payment, giving us a total budget of $23,092,871 for FY15. And if you flip to the very next page...
Mark, I'm sorry, what was E&amp;D?
Excess and deficiency, so it's like the town's rainy day account.
Okay, well, it's categorized as aid? Is that something that's given to you, or is that just an account?
No, that's, that's just how it's labeled.
Okay.
On the very next page, you'll see that that's a modest increase from FY14 at 1.73% from last year. So, overall, Southeastern Regional's budget has increased 1.73%. And assessments have stayed at the minimum required local contribution. So, we're not asking for one dime more than what the state says we have to spend on education to the students at Southeastern Regional. If you flip about halfway through, you'll see, it was in purple, but it'll say, "Local Assessments." So, obviously, I'm sure you're asking, "What does that mean to the town of Foxborough?"
It's just not that color.
They didn't take a rate to Foxborough?
Yeah, well, I just... So, on the very next page, you'll have the breakdown of the assessments. So, Foxborough's assessment is $246,996. When I was at the first meeting with the, was it the AdCon we were at? That number was actually slightly higher. And the reason for that is, if you recall, last year, the governor's numbers did not hold throughout the, the tenure of his, of his recommendation. They actually dropped, or actually, they were decreased, his numbers. So, that meant assessments were increased. But the Houseaways and the Senate have actually come together, and they've had a joint resolution where they've come together and said that the Chapter 70 number or the assessment numbers will hold. So, there was an actual small decrease to the town of Foxborough of roughly $3,000. So, the actual amount of the assessment for FY15 will be $246,996, which is an increase of $32,621 from FY14. of $32,621 from FY14. And then this year, we added on the end pages some historical data, some data of all the towns and the cities that send students to Southeastern Regional. And if you flip, and they're alphabetical, so if you go to roughly the third page, you'll see Foxborough. And in the bottom section, you'll have the factors that affect your assessment. So things such as student enrollment, enrollment as a percentage of the community, enrollment as a percentage of the district, municipal revenue growth factor, and a percentage above or below target sharing are the main factors or variables that determine the assessment to the town of Foxborough.
Now, are the assessments determined solely by enrollment?
No.
Okay, I had a question on that. I mean, are some lopsided and some a little less lopsided?
Well, the assessments are calculated through the Chapter 70 formula. The Chapter 70 formula takes into consideration enrollment as one factor, obviously a key factor, but also takes into consideration the town or the city's revenue and property values based on a whole. And that's how the formula, those are the three variables, the key variables that go into the Chapter 70 formula. So based on your state revenue or income tax returns from the state, and your assessed values in property, if there's an increase or decrease, all those factors are taken into consideration, and then the state determines how much the town or the city can afford to pay for education. And then based on enrollment, that percentage is broken out to Foxborough High School, Southeastern Regional, I don't know if you send students to the agricultural school, and the agricultural school based on enrollment. So that's why you see there's not a fixed amount per student.
Yeah, you don't just take the total number and multiply it by .014.
Correct, it's not per student, it's based on the property value and the wealth of the communities, whether, that's why you'll see that Brockton pays the least based on their wealth and property values. And I believe Foxborough's probably the second highest, right after Sharon, in the amount that they pay per student, per pupil, to send students to Southeastern Regional.
Okay.
So those are the key areas, but if there are anything you'd like to ask or like me to go back and review, we'll go into more depth, I'd be more than happy to.
Any questions?
No, I remember you from the years past, very thorough. Steve, you're wearing two different hats, Foxborough School Committee, and you're a representative of this. Do you have any perspective, or you've been following this closely?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, I like to put it that I have two children, and I love them both, and they're both very different children, okay? So to compare the schools is a little difficult, but what I can do is this, is I can talk about, I'm not trying to dodge your question.
Well, if you're taking my question as to compare it, that's not what I was asking.
I'm sorry.
Have you been, have you been spending time on this side reviewing this, and what's your perception? That's what I was asking, nothing to do with the Foxborough schools?
Yeah, in fact, I think we've gone up, I think the Southeastern Regional School District assessments have gone up, what, about 1.7?
The overall budget's 1.73%.
1.75. So the increase to the budget is very different from the one here in town, but it's managed differently, and there's different programs going on there, so it's not better, it's not worse. What has increased well at Southeastern are the MCAF scores. We have three students that are sticking out. We have Declan Maloney and Alexis Mendez, who made the National Honor Society recently. They're both Foxborough students. Caitlin Septella?
I believe that's her.
Caitlin Septella has done extremely well in the sciences. The school's got a unique drama department, which a lot of other vocational schools do not have. And that's taken some awards. And then the other industrial arts, you might know, the culinary arts and metal fabrication, bodywork, those sorts of things, those programs are going very well. We have, what, 11 students there now? From Foxborough?
From Fox, no. They enrolled 19, 17 last year, 19 in FY15.
Correct, so the students are going up, and this is the year, this is the time of year that students from the Foxborough District are getting acceptance letters if they are accepted to the school. I know of four students that have already been accepted, so I'm very happy with it. But Jim, did you want me to drill into something I haven't touched upon?
No, a couple of years ago, the questions were cost controls, and the response back was you were being very proactive in your bus routes and things like that. But for the year that you were working, actually, it's been more than one year, you've been working with the school for a couple of years now. Extraordinary measures to keep costs down and being innovative to things that are going on today, just general discussion.
Yeah, and those have happened with Mark and the superintendent that have gone very well. Plus, we spoke to the advisory committee. I saw, John, I think Ginny was there, we spoke about that, and we're setting up and asking the town to vote on, not at this town meeting, not at the upcoming town meeting, but a new fund, a stabilization fund, that we're asking all the different schools that participate in the district to approve or disapprove, however the votes go, on a stabilization fund so that, you know, our bond rates can be better. Randy Scullins has talked many times to this board about it, as it relates to Foxborough's municipality directly. Mark, if you wanted to elaborate on that, you can, or if you want to hear more about it, we can ask Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
He's one of the masterminds behind it.
The stabilization fund, really, with the school, the school committee has voted to approve, is a prudent way, now that we've done our renovation project, our capital assessment project, to keep that updated, to keep it maintained, without having to come to the communities and say, in one year, all the boilers have let go, and we need $2 million to replace them. We feel that that'd be a fiscally prudent way to set money aside under the law for things of that nature, to keep those things running and keep them maintained. The school does take a lot of pride in maintaining the school itself. Again, the last renovation project, prior to this, was 1974. The MSBA came into the school, they were very impressed on how well-maintained the school was, how clean the school was. And again, and that's just accolades to the whole staff, to the maintenance department, the students. It's funny, in a vocational school, because you see the students, they take pride in their work. The plumbers fix the plumbing, electrical, they take care of electrical. So if they see another student trying to do some damage, you know, they take pride in what they've done, and they say, hey, what are you doing? You know, let's take care of our school here. So it's a unique atmosphere, the kids really come together, they bond, and even throughout the renovation and expansion project, they were involved in a lot of that project, hands-on, so they got some real, real life experience while that project was going on. And that's one of the main things I think the kids really enjoy. And then they go back, and you know, they tell their classmates, hey, you know, we helped do that, or you know, we built that office, or whatever it was that they took part in. So they take some real pride in what goes on in the school.
And to Mark's point about the maintenance, the students are profoundly well-supervised by experts licensed, bonded, et cetera.
No, no, correct.
So we have that.
And they're not running loose, I don't think, definitely.
And Steve had brought that fund initiative to us a couple of meetings ago, and I think it was pretty well-received of the discussion. Unfortunately, the warrants were just about published.
No, and we understand, we knew it was kind of late, but yeah.
We tempered whether or not that needed to go now or not.
You pulled it, you said it could wait.
Yeah, I think we could say it wasn't the end of the world.
Want to prepare for the fall.
Definitely, that'd be appreciated, yeah.
You know, I think that's, to reach out, if you ever need help, you can reach out to, you know, it's like you said, Randy Scullins, or even Bill Ugnor, who works for our schools.
Randy was on our building's subcommittee as well, Scullins was.
He wears a lot of hats, too.
The students there, in general, and from Foxborough are, if you haven't been there, it's definitely worth a visit. It's got the same charisma that Foxborough High has when you walk into it, same charge you feel. It's incredible. But there's, you know, students from what, nine different towns?
Nine communities.
And socio-economic strata, you know, at every end of the bell curve. It's remarkable, remarkable. Not without its warts like any other school, but it's remarkable.
Any other questions from the board?
I just wanted to, you know, commend you and the superintendent, you know, over the years, I see that you have worked really hard to keep the costs down, and just the fact that you're able to fund that renovation within your budget and still have the increase, the annual increase be at less than 2%, I think is really...
Thank you.
...tribute to your efforts, you know, so thank you.
Can we mention the solar roof?
Yeah, well, just to go back, though, but that, those actions go, again, our budget process starts in early November, and it starts right with the teachers, right on up to the school committee, to the superintendent and I. So I can't take credit for all that, but it is a joint effort, and that's how we are able to keep these budgets where they're at.
There is an innovation on the roof of the building.
We're in the process right now of going solar for the building, so another possibility to save some more money at the school, some other outlets.
Pretty much every inch of the roof.
Just don't touch the trees.
Remarkable project.
Anybody else? Okay, great, thanks again for your update.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, thank you.
We'll see you sometime in, well, before the fall, like, let's say right after summer, okay? That way you can, you know, just call the office, get on the agenda, we can go over that.
Be more there, great, thank you very much. All right, good night.
Good night. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Hill for Oak Street.
Hello.
Roger.
So Mark, I've shared with the board a couple of memos that I've also shared with the residents on Oak Street.
Yep.
And you could see from the memos that their desire is pretty much to get going with something up there. The issues are basically three: excessive speed, noise, and trucks. I had three speed studies done, two at two different locations, actually, all three at different locations. And the 85th percentile speed came out between 42 and 46 miles per hour for the street. Not surprising, because the street's 36 feet from curb to curb, and the lanes are pretty wide, and it's pretty straight. There's only one big curve on the street. I also had a truck study done, and a percentage of trucks was slightly over 1%, about 1.3, 1.2, somewhere around there. That can vary from day to day, but the professionals have a particular day that they do the counts on, and that's when they did the counts, and it shows what it shows. As far as the noise goes, pretty much the noise is partly due to the speed, partly due to the trucks, and partly due to the fact that the pavement is starting to age. So there's quite a bit of noise in different places on the street. Two problems with the street are that the gas company has not completed work on replacing the main that they started on last year, and we have some serious water issues that we need to deal with on Oak Street. Oak Street's one of those non-unique streets in Foxborough that has two or three water mains on it. And the newest ones are ductile iron, and they're on one side of the street, but the only thing hooked up to those water mains is a few hydrants. The services and the lines that go into the subdivision are hooked into the old pipes, and that's why we have black water issues up there. And what we need to do with Oak Street, the same thing we did with the east part of Chestnut Street last summer, we transferred all of the services and all the hydrants over to the new pipe, and virtually eliminated the black water on that section of Chestnut Street. And we need to do the same thing on Oak Street. That stuff takes time, and we have other streets in town that need the same thing, Mechanic Street being one of them. We've had a rough winter. Oak Street hasn't suffered quite as much as some of the other streets in town. We have funding opportunities, but the governor signed the transportation bill yesterday and withheld the $100 million extra that he was supposed to give out to the cities and towns in Chapter 90. If I had that $100 million, I could add Oak Street to the list for this year, but right now, the money is just not going to be there to do it this year, we're going to have to do it next year. But the pipe work can be done, and I'm going to get going on that pipe work as we move up through Mechanic Street and then turn the corner right down Oak Street. The new plant has eliminated a good bit of the black water up there, but those services and mains still need to be transferred over to the ductile iron pipe that's on the north and east side of Oak Street. The residents would like to see some devices that could attenuate the speeds, they would like to see some devices that could, could tend to force trucks to take other routes, and they would like to see the work done yesterday. And you can see that from the responses that I have to the memos. It's up to the board to make those kind of decisions. The pavement maintenance management basically tells us where the worst roads in town are, and the winter has pretty much dictated a big segment of South Street, at least, at the very least, an overlay on West Street to hold it together for one more year until I can really do it right. And summer streets in very difficult and tough shape, some smaller streets that you'd think wouldn't be that expensive, but one of them is Foxborough Boulevard in Foxborough, it just came apart this winter, and so did Judge of Warren Road. And all of those are on the list for grind and resurface, along with many other streets that are in rough shape. So I'm willing to do whatever the board wants to do. I think the speed issue can be resolved pretty simply, because the houses are 200 feet or less apart. That makes it a thickly settled district, and we could sign it right away for 30 miles an hour in a thickly settled district. Then it would be up to the chief to enforce, and I can do that fairly quickly, just get the signs made and get them up.
Roger, longer term, you can't do anything with speed dampening and pinch the road in a bit. Those mechanisms not in the near term?
You can do that. I don't, if you sign it for 30 miles an hour, you know that, you know that the current 85th percentile speed is 45. So what you're going to do is you're going to trap a lot of people. And if you trap a lot of people, a good percentage of them are going to be locals, many of them residents. It just, that's a history of what we do. And that's, I'm not making that up, I've seen it happen, and many other people have seen it happen over the years. As far as putting, like, chicanes and things like that in, it can be done, it just adds to the cost of what you need to do, John, that's really, I have an idea for, that I might be able to make work up there, and would save us some money, but at the same time, somewhat accomplish what you just talked about. And that is, if we were to grind and resurface the middle 24 feet, stripe it with 11-foot travel lanes instead of 12-foot travel lanes, and then put chip, stone chip, chip seal on the outside of that, on the shoulders, that might have some effect on speed because of the narrow lanes. Historically, narrow lanes tend to slow traffic down. Other than that, we'd have to put obstructions in, curbing, things like that. And they become a problem for us in snow removal, because the minute you get six inches of snow, you no longer know where anything is out there, and you just have to feel it with the plow blade and the truck.
Yeah.
That's the way it works.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, if I could just, I got a couple comments. I know that Roger and I talked about this today, and one thing I had a lot of experience dealing with was fixing roads and dead them, and that was constantly an issue that we had to deal with. And it's interesting, be careful what you ask for when you put speed bumps in and things like that, because what happens is those trucks hit those, and if you think you've been walking up in the middle of the night, they're very, very loud, and when people hit those. So the method that Roger was suggesting of trying to narrow the street to a degree, putting the stone dust or the, I'm sorry, the chip seal, rougher pavement along the edge, is actually a pretty good solution. I do recommend, though, strongly, that you get all your underground work done first, because obviously, you don't want to go back and rip anything up afterwards to get it done. Now, one thing I will note, once you start construction of that, it will slow the traffic down anyways. So this year, we'll effectively achieve the slower traffic because of the construction of doing the underground utility work. And then one thing we'll do, and Roger and I, I work with Roger, and is try and get the gas company to try and, you know, speed up their, speed up their work on that road, especially where we're going to be doing the water and sewer work on that road this summer. So we'll try and get that going as soon as possible.
Anybody from the audience wish to rehearse this matter? If so, please come up and sit down, so the audience at home can hear you.
Again, for Dean Oak Street.
Welcome.
Glad to be here. I've been on Oak Street since 66, and it's gone from a real nice street to a horror show. The other day, someone said to me, it can't be that bad, what are you talking about? I said, do you live on Oak Street? No. Well, then how do you know how the hell Oak Street is? Number one problem on Oak Street, I, based on the 1% I heard for truck traffic, the trucks, if it's only 1%... the trucks, if it's only one percent, they're eighty percent of the problem. That street carries every conceivable type of commercial vehicle you ever saw. It's unbelievable. From the smallest commercial to these huge eighteen-wheelers that got seventy-foot beds and gravel trucks and anything else you can imagine. Those vehicles create a lot of noise, and they speed. I, the biggest thing, excuse me, the biggest thing I think that can be done, which I understand is the hardest, is keep all the commercial vehicles off that street, because it has been, been the number-one shortcut between ninety-five and Co-Casket going into Foxborough, uh, into Mansfield. They love the street. No restrictions, no police presence, nothing to slow them down. Now, I can attest that they start at five fifteen in the morning. And unfortunately, on the corner of Oak and Louise Drive, there was an issue with the water valve, and it began leaking last fall. And, uh, it was tightened a few times, but it kept leaking, and then they left it alone, and it really started to leak, and it leaked for a substantial amount of time till they got down and they repaired it. And, uh, I believe that that area of that street has been compromised by all that water that's down underneath, and the repair that was done at that valve, when they hot-topped it, that collapsed, and actually I talked to Mr. Hill, they came back up, they hot-topped it and everything. But what happened now is, at that corner, the road's a little high. So at five fifteen in the morning and during the day, when they come down that road, they hit that bump, especially these big trucks. Well, I can attest to every window in my house, and my floor's shaking and vibrating, and I'm on that corner. So that's just one small part of the little, the road there that I think has really got a problem, but the big issue was the trucks. Now, I was out there the other day when the, one of the cruisers was sitting on the corner of Oak and Louise, unfortunately, that's wide open, but... And I'm on the corner, and I was right next to him, and I watched him. When they saw that cruiser, you could see every one of those taillights go on, even though they were facing us. That's how fast they slowed down, because they were over the speed limit. Yes, and I probably, probably we have, uh, Oak Street residents that go over thirty miles an hour, I'm sure of it. Uh, but I have done a couple of things that, um, Mr. Palito did. I've come off a Co-Casket and put my car on thirty-five. By golly, they hate me. The cars behind me, they purely hate me, and he's done the same thing. So Oak Street is a huge issue. Now, if I believed in ghosts, I would think that Mr. Emis was sitting right back there with me, because I came to so many meetings where he fought the Oak Street issues in the day. And then I remember him fighting for the traffic light at the corner of Oak and Mechanic, and I know how many years that took. And then I know it took five years after they did all their studies and everything to even get the light. So I'm not looking for an overnight cure on Oak Street. But the huge thing, as I wanted to point out to the board, is the truck traffic. And one summer, about two summers ago, or last summer, when they were doing major construction somewhere, every five minutes, a huge gravel truck would come up that street, sometimes three at a time. And let me tell you, that, the noise that they make and the fact that I know they're going over forty miles an hour, 'cause the drivers, there's no restrictions. And the other thing, though, that I think, I hope is gonna be easy to do, I counted the start, the speed signs on one side of Oak and on the other. Double 'em. I mean, if that's hard to do, then by golly, we're in trouble. Double those speed signs. You can go a half a mile before you see another thirty-mile speed sign. There should be at least nine on either side of the road. And, uh, but the speeding is one thing, and the, but the trucks are the huge, huge problem on that street. And not only that, it's gotten worse. And again, as I said, lumber, uh, national lumber, they're the, one of the worst offenders. I, I'd like to see those trucks stopped and outweighed. I'm sure fifty percent of them are over their weight limits. But they're up and down that road continuously, and they start right after five o'clock in the morning. So, uh, that is really a problem. And as I said just when I started, the person that said to me, "Well, what are you talking about? What's wrong with Oak Street?" And then I asked them, "Do you live there?", and the answer is, "No." So obviously, you don't know what goes on on Oak Street. So anyway, just opinion, uh, on that particular issue. And I'll tell ya, if my house keeps rumbling anymore, there's already cracks on one side of my pile that never existed. I'll have to send a bill to the towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How would the board feel about lowering the speed limit to thirty-five?
Thirty, Mike.
It's already thirty-five.
It's thirty-five now.
Thirty-five now?
Yeah.
Okay.
May not be a lawful thirty-five.
And adding more signs, would the board be okay with that?
Roger, you said because it's densely populated.
It's two hundred feet or less between the houses and...
But you could, we could change it to thirty.
You could change it to thirty, right, anytime. Anytime the board's so, so ordered.
You feel that power, Julian?
You're the road commissioners.
Wow. How's the board feel about that?
Yeah, I commend you. I mean, it, six, probably five, six months ago, I mean, this came, at the same time, North and Payson, um, and people wanted to basically stop the, all the trucks from going through there, which obviously brings up other issues of routing them to other neighborhoods. But it, it seems, it doesn't meet the state warrant to do that, and, and that's an impossibility right now. So if the eighty-fifth percentile is warranted, but then it's overridden because it's a thickly settled, because the houses were two hundred, you could put the thirty miles an hour, and then maybe either put 'em on both sides or more aggressive.
And he's right about the spacing, they need to be...
No, I know that. I was on it today, actually. Good, yeah.
And, and I, you, you had referenced, uh, Chief O'Leary in here, but they have been stepping up the police officers there and writing the tickets?
Averaging five a day, I was told, so...
But are they only writing 'em for people doing forty-five or greater?
Any, thirty-five is the speed limit, but they're probably giving 'em five miles an hour. I don't wanna speak for the police, though, 'cause I didn't, I wa, I didn't participate in any of that, so...
No, I'm only, because his programs are ticketing all vehicles traveling and measured at forty-five miles or greater, so they're not even ticketing...
Well, they're gonna give them a slowdown.
Forty, yeah.
You know, depending on the officer, if somebody sees it multiple times, they're probably gonna say, "Okay, time's up."
And they issue two kinds of tickets. They issue a warning ticket and then a violation ticket, and I don't know how many of each is...
So I, I would be in favor of the third, you know, based on the study that you did, based on the complaints, and, and I, I know Mr. Bataille lives, and I know, I mean, you get, when you have a ro, a road that wide for so long and only one bend in it, just so people are aware, what's gonna end up happening is, is gonna be a lot of tickets written, and the majority are gonna be from the people on Oak Street, or, or, or the residents of Foxborough going through. So people on the, same, same issue that you're bringing up, if you put speed bumps, the people that are gonna use it every day, the people that live there, so they're gonna be inconvenienced by that. I think there's gonna be a lot of tickets for local. And, and I'm saying this, and I've said it before, I live on North Street, you put the speed bumps in, and I still go fast, and, and I do it every day. So I, I would support thirty miles an hour with the understanding that there are gonna be a lot of unhappy people, 'cause they're gonna get ticketed that live in the area.
Well, maybe when the, the next, the board, whoever's on the board in the future, after road improvements are done, can bring it back up to thirty-five at that point in time, which is two years away, minimum, right? Two years before you're done with the infrastructure and the road?
Yeah, it's at least...
Maybe three?
That's two. We can do it, too.
'Cause I know Mill Street's...
Let me say this. If in his infinite, infinite wisdom Governor Patrick releases the hundred million that he held back yesterday, we could get going on it, but that, that doesn't look...
Planting trees while you're up there, will you, Roger, on the sides?
I, I didn't wanna talk about that during the discussion, but what, what we try to do is what we did on Payson Road. We try to, try to make a deal with the property owners and set the trees back, so that the property owner can take care of that tree after it's planted until it gets its legs under it, and it's far enough off the road so it doesn't, doesn't, uh, cause a later problem with raising up the pavement and stuff like that. And some people like 'em, and they want 'em, and some people don't.
Roger, how long would it take you to change the signs over?
Two days.
Uh, it'd probably take me about a month to get the signs and the posts, and then Fred will just do three or four a day, and we'll get 'em done.
Put 'em in the ground.
You have to do dig safe down at the post.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do, especially with gas. So, um...
I'll make a motion.
Everybody supports it? And I will say...
And also the, the extra signs.
The extra signs, we'll get nine each side, I think he's running the money with the nine, too. I really believe that.
I think that's about right.
And then, uh, 'cause that road, two point, what, miles long?
It's ten thousand eight-hundred feet.
Two miles.
Yep.
So you're talking about a sign every quarter mile. So if you put it in each side, that's every quarter mile. And if you stagger 'em, it'd be even better. But the other thing, too, I was on that road today, and I did witness a truck doing well over fifty, carrying a large load, sitting in the end of Ram's Road at eleven o'clock this morning. And I just, and the, I just could not believe the speed that truck was going, especially at school vacation week. It was just unconscious, you know?
I, I think I sent the, the, the studies up, and if you have time someday, look at 'em, because they, they give you all the ranges for five mile an hour increments. And we have vehicles going sixty-five miles an hour on Oak Street.
That might be my wife, but... So the motion would be that everybody in town gets a free pass at thirty miles an hour, but outsiders get the ticket, right?
Luck with that.
Talk to the chief. I move that the Board of Selectmen, acting as road commissioners, uh, change the speed limit on Oak Street to thirty miles per hour. I guess effective when you can get the signs up.
Second.
Any more? And you want to choose two motions, one for the add more signs, or you can just do that?
I'll do that, yeah.
All right, any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, we get started on Oak Street. Thank you. All right, wow. We somehow caught up. We're right on time again. Three minutes left, all right. Mr. Othlet, Mr. Dooley, would you come forward, please?
We thank you very much, we, uh...
Thank you. I'm here to catch up with you, brother.
I'm easy to find.
Well, I wanna, I wanna sit down and work with some issues.
Good, good. But also to, to thank Bob Cutler to step in and, and, uh, challenging me in front of time.
Did a, did a great job.
Well done.
Ditto.
So, um, we, uh, Mr. Dooley and I had been here earlier to get your approval on the town-wide cleanup program, and, uh, things are going extremely well. When are the flyers going out?
Probably, uh, next Thursday to all the schools. We sent an email to the superintendent of schools that she approved. We got permission from the three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, and every kid in the school will receive a flyer about the day to try to get the numbers up.
And we contacted all the, uh, all the different groups in town, and, uh, right now, there's a hundred and, I think a hundred and thirty-some odd people signed up. And, uh, we'll, we'll start rubbing up, uh, on that, uh, quite a bit. There's a, a, a couple of things that, uh, one in particular that we would like to ask the board to extend, uh, beyond our original request. It would be extremely beneficial to us, both immediate and long-term. You would make this cleanup committee a town committee. The immediate reasons, um, number one, um, when we're, I mean, the enemy is litter. We're going after it wherever it is. But when you come off of Route ninety-five down to one forty, I mean, it's embarrassing, the sight of all that litter on the side of the road. Now, the state's not gonna clean it up, we are. But, I mean, A.J. Dooley and Jack Othlet, it, it would be much better if we were a town committee, uh, doing this, just like we've gotta clean up sections of the railroad and, uh, and everything else. But, um, if we were also, uh, as a, an official town committee, uh, then, uh, we could be invited onto, um, industrial property, um, primarily, so that we could have a local downtown industry host our entire signup effort as well as our closing celebration. We did the signup in the town hall parking lot last year, and the closing celebration on the common. That's cramped space, the common is busy, we can put everything all in one place, and it would just change our whole operation so much. And if you recall, we are also inviting the entire town to use that opportunity on Armed Forces Day to bring in their donations that will go out to the servicemen and women through HADOTL regroup and Hero Helpers. And, um, all these things are set up, we, we just, we just need these, uh, things to give us a different, uh, standing in the community. But going down the road, I mean, the, the centerpiece of this is always gonna be A.J. Dooley and company, uh, designing the routes, providing the shirts, all the trucks and everything else, I mean, the hundreds of hours that have gone into this. The, all of this done at absolutely not one penny of cost to the town. This will still always be the focus, but when you look down the road, to be able to expand this a bit to a permanent committee, we could then take on, uh, traffic islands. Uh, already, we've had requests from Conservation to do two of their areas, all of these things that we could add, and even a litter education campaign and other litter collecting points around town. So we, we could really, really make this sum. And, uh, what we would be, most immediate and most helpful to us right now would be to, um, just, well, uh, for a couple of weeks, we'd be a, a rather, uh, small committee, but, I mean, it would get us through this project.
Our, our next-door neighbors over in Mansfield run one of the best cleanup days in the state. It has morphed into this unbelievable thing, and it all started off just the way it did with us. You know, one person bringing something up, another person starting an idea, and everyone just running with it as a town. And I see no reason why we can't do that here in Foxborough. Today, I did a little exercise to try to get my point across, um, and I had my niece and one of her friends go down Ridge Road, the street I live on. So they started at the very top of Ridge Road. We did not hit the two cul-de-sacs off of it, but we just went straight down Ridge Road. And they were out there for about an hour and a half, and I got pictures that I'm gonna try to get into the Foxbury Report, and not this Thursday, but next Thursday, to coincide with the letters that will go out to all the schools. And we filled four contractor bags full of trash, a lawn chair, and a door to someone's shed. And I got it all in a pile, and it's ama, I mean, it's amazing. That's, I live on a, I don't know, three-quarter of a mile street, and you, you got all that trash. When you drive down Ridge Road right now, I mean, it, there's, you can't see a piece of trash anywhere, it's, it's great. And, um, you know, if, if we really get behind this as a town, people are gonna be driving through, and you're gonna see a difference. I mean, when you go driving down the roads tomorrow, ta, you open your eyes and really look, and there's trash everywhere, everywhere. And it's just one of those things that if we don't stay on it as a community, it can really get ahead of you. And now's the time, and I wanna get this done. So with your blessing, we can make this a real big thing.
Mark, if you would, I just, uh, wanna also indicate that they originally planned to have this on Town Hall Parking Lot to open it up. And as Jack explained, uh, I believe that Schneider Electric volunteered their lot on railroad halves, is that right?
At, at the, uh, at the foot of Bird Street, just over the tracks, so we've got that whole grove.
Right. And that raised some, uh, issues with liability possibly and insurance coverage and things like that. So that's why the group is here tonight asking for your support to make it a town committee. So, you know, it's just something you have to also keep in mind when you're making your decision tonight. But, um, you know, it, it was a great effort last year, um, and they're hoping to just expand it. So, um, you know, I, I know Bill had mentioned something about dead'em, what they've done there, so...
We've, um, if I could just add, we've created a, well, it was actually created before I actually arrived there, it was a group called Civic Pride. And they, uh, and they, they take care of the, the traffic islands, they plant flowers, they do cleanups, um, and they do that kind of, just the exact type of things that, that... type of things that, that Jack was talking about. And, um, it's really a good thing because every, it's all run by through donations. People, they have a fundraiser every year and people come and donate money and, and they, they pay for all the flowers and they maintain them and they, you know, they, they take care of it. It really helps to beautify the community.
It's amazing what people are willing to do. If you show them a project where they can go in and make a difference and, and they can feel sense of ownership.
I've seen it and it's really, it's very effective.
Yep.
Just a question, the, uh, the committee in Mansfield, are they a standing town committee? They are?
I think so. I mean, it's.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, and they have been for a while.
Yeah. They have their own website and stuff like that and they have, I mean, it's, it's a big, big project over there. I wanna say that they get seven hundred to a thousand volunteers, you know? So last year in the thirty day, we, we basically had twenty-eight days, we put this together and, and we had just about, just about two, two hundred and something, I wanna say.
Right.
Um, my goal this year, I mean, I, I wanna, I would like to get in the range of five hundred. If we don't get more than four hundred, I'd be, I'd be, uh, I'd be upset. So we're really gonna push it through the schools and try to get the stuff in the pa, newspaper and, you know, I did this little exercise today to show people, so.
Now, when folks sign up, is there a waiver of some sort that, um, absolves the town of any liability?
No, but the people, the people sign in in the morning, so I'd be, I'd be up, open for whatever you guys want to put together as they're signing in and giving their T-shirt, sign on the line.
It may have to be if the insurance company gets involved and.
Sounds good. It's, you know, we'll, we'll do whatever we gotta do to make it work.
But, um, they tell me at Inventus, which is now Snyder, that they, they've done this for years. When town groups have come on, onto their property for whatever, the, the town issues the insurance license and the, um, uh, insurance goes with them.
Right. We should, Sandra and I checked with the, uh, agent last week and the issue was, you know, is it a formal town?
It's a formal town committee. That's, that's pretty standard, actually.
But it, it, it just, the, the benefit back to the town is so enormous on something like this.
Don't disagree with that.
But, but again, uh, the, the cleanup would, would still be the main block of activity, but there's so much more that we could be doing. And, uh, it, it could be just part of everyday life, um, in Foxborough that, that somebody's gonna latch on to one of these projects and, and go with it. And it could make a, an incredible difference in the community.
Well, we can't have Mansfield one upping us either, so.
Everybody all set? Any more questions?
Yeah, no, I have no problems at all. I think it's, uh, it's great.
Entertaining motion.
I'll make a mo, uh, you have one?
One you can go ahead. If you've got it worked out.
And, and just so we're clear, you only have two people that wanna be on this committee?
Well, yeah, we'll be back shortly and give you some names and all of this, but right now, the sense of urgency is I would like to be able to say to Snyder in the morning, we're gonna be okay. Because we haven't been able to announce where you're signing up, where you come for the party, all of these things, because we gotta lock it in.
So we'd have to appoint.
A.J.
Yeah.
And then next year we could open it up from there. You know what I mean? I think that something like this would be a good five, a good five-person committee and then maybe to grow to seven. You know what I mean? Right. James, get a motion.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, uh, implement a town committee called the Foxborough Cleanup Day Committee.
Cleanup Foxborough, uh, Cleanup, yeah, Cleanup Foxborough Day Committee.
Cleanup Foxborough Day Committee.
Yep.
For these, with these two gentlemen as, uh, the first two members. And keep it simple.
I'll second that.
All's in favor?
Hi.
All right, gentlemen. Jack, just for the record, I've never said no to you.
Well, I, I, I hope you can keep that going. I, uh, my luck is, is running well, but I, I will say in all honesty, I've never come to this table and asked for anything for myself.
Nope.
So it's, it's been good for the town. But I, I will say, uh, you can imagine what my conversations with Mr. Dooley have been over these past few weeks and all of his staff members, but we actually got to talk about something other than the cleanup today when I was over in his office and, uh, one of the gentlemen said to me, hey, while you're here, take a look at this. And they're installing a new program in the company where they have a monitor and issue their trucks and they cover a lot of territory. They'll know where every truck is at any given time. They will know what speed that truck is traveling, on which street, what the posted speed limit is for that street and its relationship to the speed of the truck.
Now, he's just told all you workers, do they know?
I literally, I literally, I literally just text my guys, slow down on Oak Street, two minutes ago as I was doing it. So there will be no Dooley trucks going fast on Oak Street.
Well, they're gonna stop at every house, at every house. How much speed can you get up between houses, Agent?
Hey.
Nice, nice job, guys.
It is a busy road. I will agree with that.
I don't know how many, how many years I wrote news stories about Oak Street and it doesn't sound like much has changed, but it will now.
Thank you very much for your time. Yeah, appreciate it. All right, we're actually going right on schedule. Um, Bill Ugnuck, Bill Casper, Randy Scollins, Bob Cutler, Town Hall Lease RFP. Who would like to take the lead?
Go ahead, Randy. You got the real memo.
Yeah, Randy. Join in. So, uh, I'm assuming you have, Paul have the information that was supplied in your packets. Um, so we've, uh, uh, we've put out a request for proposal for leases for.
Dick, can they start first?
Is there a data handout sheet, point of order?
Yeah, there was extras that were.
My.
Cover letter.
You can have this one.
Yeah, mine.
I only have this one.
So, um, just, just, I guess just to back up, um, as you know, we've been at the, the Town Hall Solution Game for, I think, over four years now actively. I know it's been going on for longer than that, about fifteen years. But, um, with the last two failures of the proposals, both which were endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, um, to tear down and, and build new, um, we, this, our committee, uh, determined that we would be responsive to what we were hearing from, uh, some folks that we should seriously explore the lease option. Um, and so that's what we've done. So we prepared a request proposal, uh, put it out officially, uh, on the, through the states, Secretary of State's, uh, procurement, uh, website and through the, the Foxborough Reporter. We received three, um, responsive bids, uh, one from, uh, King Light for a, a, a building to be built, um, down on Chestnut Green, the behind Waxies Dagley across from Public Safety Building. Um, the, uh, owner of the, the Remax Building on, on mechanic street, um, they put that building forward, uh, as well as, um, two twenty-five Foxborough Boulevard, which is, is down past Judge Warren Lane, that area. Uh, so those, those are the three, um, three facilities that came forward. We went through a process of, um, uh, independently, the four of us, Bill, Phil and myself, independently reviewing, um, the responses and ranking them and, uh, on, on eleven different dimensions, scores of zero to nine. And, uh, two of them came out very close, uh, the King Light Proposal and the two twenty-five Fox Boulevard Proposal. Um, and, uh, there are the, the different, uh, locations, obviously, you know, one is about one point, so one point six miles away from the center of town. That's the two twenty-five Fox Boulevard. And the, uh, the, the King Light, um, proposed site, I believe, is, uh, about three quarters of a mile, is the crow flies from the center of town. So not, not directly in the center of town, but those are the responses that we got. The Remax Building Proposal, um, was the one that, uh, just didn't score, uh, as highly, um, for a variety of different reasons, cost, uh, size, et cetera. So we've, uh, provided you the, how we ranked them on the different dimensions and the different, um, cost proposals that, that each of, have put forward. Um, and what we've also done, just to give it context, is compare, uh, the three different, uh, lease cost proposals to, um, just as a reference point, what it would, what it would have cost us to knock down and build new on the existing site. Um, and, uh, those comparisons are just, uh, you know, twenty-five year lease in total, multiple options. Just to get to some, uh, bottom line numbers here, uh, the King Light, you know, uh, on the face of it proposal, about sixteen point six eight million over twenty-five years. Uh, the Remax Building Proposal, seventeen million. Uh, the two twenty-five Fox Boulevard Realty, just under thirteen million. And the, um, the original proposal that we put forward a couple of times, eleven point six million. So I think one of the things that I believe folks were, were expecting is that the lease, um, the lease option, you know, might be a more economical, um, approach. Obviously, it's not, um, you know, that the numbers are gonna continue because obviously if the, the town were to relocate the building, it's gonna, it would, the cost would continue beyond the twenty-five years. Um, yes, there'd have to be on, on a new building, you know, there's maintenance, et cetera, that we would have to put into it. But I, I don't think it would be to the degree that, um, that would, that the other three would cost. Two of them did provide, uh, buyout options. Um, the King Light Proposal provided a buyout option after, after five years for six and a half million. If you add in the interest cost, if we finance that, plus the first five months, uh, five years rent, uh, it would bring it right up to eleven point six million, right, what, what it would cost us to, to do our own, do our own thing. Uh, the two twenty-five Fox Realty, uh, building, which is a larger building, I believe it's was a forty-eight thousand square feet, so, you know, much larger than, than we need. It's a single tenant in there right now. Um, they're willing to clear out the first, first floor for the, for the town. They had a buyout option after ten years of seven point two million, um, plus ten years rent and interest, to finance seven point two, it'd be about fourteen million dollars. Uh, so that would, um, that, that option would be more expensive. And then there's the question of, you know, what will we do with the other space? Is there, there'd have to be some space planning that would have to go into that. Would there be something else that would go there? Is that still the one point six miles from center of town? Is that a desirable, you know, location? So those are the findings in a nutshell. I don't know if anybody else wants to offer any other data points before we take, take questions.
Before, Randy, when you included a new structure for the town of Foxborough, you said eleven point?
Eleven, uh, yeah, eleven point six, uh, all in, you know, including interest.
Interest. Now, does that cover maintenance on the building? Does the other leases cover maintenance too? Are the, is it apples to apples is my point?
Yeah, the, um, the, the costs, uh, the cost of the other three proposals, um, we, we made them apples to apples. They were different cost proposals. Uh, the King Light Proposal and the two twenty-five, uh, Fox Realty Proposals were, in essence, all in, um, with the exception of, uh, electric. Whereas the Remax Building was, uh, there was, there was no build out, whereas the other two had, had full build out, so there'd be a significant, you know, seven figure cost to do a build out within the, the Remax Building. And, um, there were very little, very few costs, um, that were being covered at all in that. So we had to add in components, uh, to, to cover, uh, the utilities and commonary maintenance and things like that.
Bill, will you concur with this?
Yeah, I think the, uh, again, to Randy's point, the, the committee looked at this from the approach that, um, there was an unanswered question at town meeting, um, and that was the lease option. Most businesses prefer to lease rather than own, um, and I think that's where some of the taxpayers were kinda looking at it. Shouldn't we look at this as a business and how would we, uh, approach that? So, um, there may be numerous other sites in town that are capable of handling a town hall, but when you go out, as you all know, you have to go through the formal process of an RFP. If only three of them are willing to step forward and say they are targets for this type of a, a scenario, that's your only three options, uh, no matter how many other pieces of property are out there that could do it. Um, so legally, we, we've done what is, is required of, uh, the town to say what's, you know, our due diligence relative to what's a, a leasable piece of property. The fact that we, they were all willing to do multiple years of five-year terms, um, again, uh, if you were gonna make this commitment, you wouldn't wanna be locked into something that could change five years from now and had to move the entire town hall. Um, one of the biggest things I think most of you know is the vault space, which is not something you commonly find. The two, as Randy said, that were willing to do, uh, what we wanted as a, a community, were willing to, to build in that vault space, um, as part of their build out, so not additional cost to the town. Um, so again, with that additional cost and with the, the fact that if, no matter where we moved to, we would need that vault space, uh, you don't really wanna have to move down the road. So this way we would know what our, our lease spaces are. What I found interesting is that almost all the cases, their, uh, five-year increments were actually pretty hefty in what they were looking for increases. That's not what I've seen in the past renting commercial space. So, um, I'm not sure why, you know, they were taking that approach. Uh, the other thing is in, in the, uh, King Light Proposal, um, they proposed twenty-two thousand square feet as a building because, and, and I think anyone put into this, uh, position would do the exact same thing. That's what they know they can fit on the property. If the town were to bail after five years, they're gonna obviously have wanted to build the most they could build up front, um, and not have to try to do it down the road. I think if there was a serious discussion with the town to say, this is really all we want, um, there isn't room for negotiation. The RFP was written so that we could sit down, if, if in fact the Board of Selectmen said, well, we'd like to approach one of these and, and move forward with it based on the ratings and everything, um, we could sit down and actually negotiate further, uh, shrink the space, you know, get the rents down, get the overall cost down. Uh, so that there may be a differential there, but you'd have to really buy into the fact that you believe the lease space is the best option for the town, not only from the location.
The lease buy, you mean the lease and buy, but then aren't we just designing another building down the street that we already wanted to design in our own spot for less money?
He actually, he actually has a design that he, you know, as far as what the building would look like, it's just the layout would be something that would fit our needs versus maybe a standard commercial need. So that would be the differential. You, you'd actually have a treasure collector's office built out versus just open office space, that type of thing.
Bill, do you concur?
Absolutely. The, uh, King Light Proposal, it is a shovel-ready project, is, that was mentioned. They have gotten their permits from, from the town, uh, planning department. They're ready to break ground now and as Bill alluded to, uh, good business people. They, their proposal was for maximizing their space for future, uh, future use by another business tenant spaces. So that's why the twenty-two thousand square foot figure came from. However, what we're asking of the board is that they make a recommendation and just allow us to go forward and negotiate if that is what you feel is the best approach and that we can work and get that number whittled down to what we were originally looking for in the proposals, fifteen to seventeen five square feet, thousand square feet.
And their proposal right now is fourteen?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two.
You know, million.
Oh.
Sixteen, six. Over the twenty-five years with a buyout option, uh, currently at the end of year five for six and a half million, two point seven five million. Rent over five years gets you to nine point two five and then for us to finance, uh, six and a half would add about another two point four millions. It gets us right up to that eleven six number that we were looking at with the, the original proposal that we had.
I see, uh, mutual town managers over here wanting to get the mic here, so I'm gonna pass it over to them who would like to go for us, the old or the new?
I'll look for the old first.
We have the same age, though, I just have to say.
I just had to take that shot, sorry.
I agree with the rest of the group and it's really up to this board what direction it takes from here. We were just charged to provide you with the information and that's what we've done. Um, I think apples to apples, if, if we could build new on the present site, that would be great. The master plan is to stay downtown. We get that, but after the last town meeting was very clear, there was no appetite for that at this time without the information that we provided to you. So, um, we've now provided that information to you and it's up to you to give the committee some more direction.
What is interesting about the discussion that's gone on and, and what I've seen so far is that it, it may be twenty-two thousand square feet. We only need fifteen, sixteen, fifteen, seventeen, seventeen five is probably the number. So that being the case, he could still conceivably build that space. He could then lease out that remaining space. Um, and if the town were to buy it later on, we could actually have a tenant that will live with us and, uh, we could collect rent off that to help offset some of the, the bond proceedings. So the other, the other, we've, we've looked at that in, in the community I just came from. So there, it's, it is, it is interesting because I, we've not looked at that kind of approach before, but I thought it was interesting. We looked at a lease purchase or a condominium minimization of a building once. But, but I thought, this is kind of an interesting proposal. We have the option to buy it after five years.
So what is, well, does the board want to?
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Given that the lease option really isn't a slam dunk, I mean, it's not a clear winner, would that possibly reignite the town's appetite to revisit the present location?
Well, I would hope, quite honestly, that it answers one question that's been put out there, and that, you know, if the taxpayers, and I, and I do think most taxpayers believe that you, you own your, your buildings because you are a forever tenant. You're not a
Right.
twenty-year tenant or a ten-year tenant. You're, you know, you, you are a member of the town, you're going to have a town hall forever. So I think that's why most people look at the fact that we own buildings, we don't rent schools, we don't rent, you know, DPW buildings. It's, it is your infrastructure to run your business with, and our business just happens to be satisfying the, the needs of the town. So I think from that perspective, we've answered the question. I think the, the real question now becomes, with that answer, is buying something over time, like the King Light property, does it, does it meet the first need? Are we close enough to where people believe town hall has to be? And if that's the case, then you've got an option there. If it's not the case, then you really don't even have an option there. I think we knew going into this that there were no buildings in downtown that would meet the downtown need.
That's what we thought, but then one popped up.
Well, and, and that's true, but unfortunately, the, the proposal that was presented was just way too open-ended with too much cost to the town, and that's why.
And it also phased in with tenants, some would be gone, and then, then you'd get more space another year later. It just was.
And then ultimately, more space than we really need.
Yeah. So, so I really think it's, it's a, it's a decision that the, the selectmen have to make at this point with one more piece of information in your hands. So as to which way you'd let us move forward.
Yeah, the other piece of information that we don't have is, if we, if say we did decide to go down one of these paths, we still have a building, we still have to deal with it. What's the plan for that?
Yeah, we have plenty of those going.
You would, you would probably go through the similar process that we'll ultimately go through with the fire station and the, the tax foreclosure property that, that abuts that, and I would imagine that we'll ultimately get with the IMA eminent pursuer, I, I imagine we would get some serious interest in that building as well if we were going to pursue one of these options.
But to, to your point, John, does it reignite that? It probably does, but for, for being an occupant, and Randy can say the same, Bill, something's got to be done sooner rather than later because we cannot go another four years in that building despite the maintenance issues. It's just become a hazard issue. We can't use the downstairs. So something's got to be done sooner rather than later.
That's why we're here, is in the school building. Okay, Lorraine?
I had one question about the bond payments, the calculation. Is the cost for temporary relocation not reflected in this number?
That was in the, the original cost estimates by KBA, so that is, is actually in the numbers.
So that's in here? Okay, that's great. Thank you so much for bringing this information. I think it really, it really helps.
We under attack?
Maybe. I think it gets the answer that, to the question that people had, you know, in terms of the lease options. But I, I really am excited to see that it does potentially give us the opportunity to reignite the current location, which is really in line with the master plan. And I would hope that this would clear up the concerns that advisory committee had in terms of wanting this answer. And, you know, perhaps we could really move forward to have discussions as to, you know, what makes sense to do.
What it also does, which is basically it, to a degree, confirms the value of Forty South Street. And because again, these are all buildings that people are amortizing the same way, figuring out their cost and going through the exact process, and that's what their buildings are worth. So why wouldn't our building be worth that to build?
Right.
You know, we're not a magic house, if anything. We are on the opposite side because we have all the constraints of, of, you know, purchasing under the state guidelines and having to pay, you know, wages that are, you know, prevailing wage type thing. So we actually run about a twenty-five percent to thirty percent increase in our costs compared to the private sector, but yet our numbers for the same-sized building is coming out pretty close. So it, it does show our numbers aren't really off that much in the, the concept of what it would cost to build, a building that we could talk about.
You stole my gusto. Thanks.
You all set?
Yep, thank you.
Kenny?
The requirements for a municipal building, when you're building a building, are the requirements for a municipal building different from the requirements, the state requirements for a commercial building?
No.
No?
Only, only the vaulted area. Now, obviously, it's, you need to decide it so it's, you're having the public coming in, you need wider hallways, counters that you wouldn't normally have in an office building. So you, you, you have to make that efficient, that layout. But as far as the construction requirements, no.
Spring crews, all, that's the same. Your ADA is all the same.
The earthquake.
Public building.
And the plan that would be used in, in figuring out the space and everything would be the plan that your committee thought of or considered for the new town hall?
Well, that was, that's a starting point. Remember, that was not a finalized plan. That was a plan that was a design, it was a concept. So obviously, you know, before we would go to the next step of fully blowing that out to the real plans that we would construct, I, I think you guys need to sit down, and I think the, the individual boards need to sit down with you, and you need to kind of vet all the spaces out. Maybe vet the outside look, how it sits on the property. I mean, all that stuff has yet to really be decided. The only thing that was, was a concept to come up with a number based on the square footage we needed, based on the components and the functions.
Right.
That was the point of the vote at the special in November, was we needed that money to get the design plans ready to build.
That's the five fifty you see.
Five fifty, and that was turned down.
That we already have.
Right.
Right.
Kenny, any more questions?
No, all set. Thank you very much for doing this.
Yeah, thanks, guys. And just for the board, just for a quick disclosure, I'm in land development, civil engineering, I have a lot of clients. I have one client named New Murray Design, who is actually working for two twenty-five Foxborough Realty. So, and, and Bill, I've spoken to you about that project. They were planning on renovating that building, putting the tenant, all the tenants, combining them on one floor, and totally restructuring the building and the site. So I've been involved in this project for a while, well before the RFP. So if that makes anybody uncomfortable, I can recuse myself, but does, I have no monetary benefit if this goes forward one way or the other. So I want to make that clear.
We've been working on it for a long time.
Yeah, just to point out, I mean, they, in their proposal, they had suggested several renovations to the building, the parking lot, the, the heating facility, HVAC. So it was.
Yeah, so one, one way or the other, they're moving forward with or without town hall. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I've said it before, and I'll be repetitive, I'm not a fan of a municipal, municipality renting space for long term, for twenty-five years. And you've named some reasons, and there's many more I can think of. It just doesn't make sense when you own the property, when you have a building, and as John said, when you've got an asset which you've got to do something with, and then you're moving it over for twenty-five years. Temporarily, you could do it well, you know, two years, three years, when it's under construction. I've seen this process, and then I know, another, I had called up Bill before this meeting with a simple question, if this board goes, now that we have the information, the kind of the uncertain discussion was, you know, why don't we lease? Lease, it's a no-brainer. I've heard it from the AdCom, I heard people that are not in the business say, you know, lease people do it all the time. It's not that simple. But if we go back to the process of looking at town hall, whether it's renovation, knock-down, build, whatever, your committee got, you know, the crap kicked out of them at town meeting, and all the blogs and in the newspaper. Do you guys have the wherewithal to even revisit this? Because if I was sitting in your seat, I would just say, I'm done, and, and bring somebody else on. Because it, it's been a painful process. And I, the, the last thing I wanted to say is I, you know, there were some articles written, Bridgewater's doing a new town hall. So Bridgewater can do it for this amount, why can't we do that? And we're idiots and, and all that stuff. So I sat there and I listened to it. One of my projects is the Bridgewater Town Hall right now. We're restoring that because it's a significant landmark. It's right in the middle, it couldn't be anymore in the middle, the road area goes around it. They've had the police and fire station, and they've had town hall, town hall's moved out, now they want to move back in. That cannot be knocked down, so the money has to be put into it. And it's still cheaper what we're doing than that. But I'm reading the articles and, and all the discussion, and I wanted to walk away from this because is it worth it? You know, the, the aggravation. My recommendation, as it was before, is to knock down town hall and rebuild it. I, I've, I've seen studies on both sides. I've seen the numbers, and I've heard the arguments of, you know, bring in Windex and ammonia and get rid of the mold. You know, why would we ever knock down a building? You don't do it from your house, you put an addition on it. I, I first got married, I lived in Plainville, it was a small Cape, we started having children. I wouldn't knock it down and, and build a new one. I couldn't put in addition. I'd sell it and move someplace else, but there's a buyer for that. I sold the, the Cape, a small, you know, two-bedroom Cape. There's no buyer for town hall. One way or the other, somebody's got to deal with all the issues. We own the asset. We, you know, somebody on this board, or the entire board, or the entire planning board, if, you know, if planning board wants things in, to stay down town hall, I mean, sorry, in the town center, and the selectmen want this, and the advisory committee kind of wants it, collectively, we've got to get our act together because there's people that work in town hall that can't, you know, per capita, the, the space that people are in there, you couldn't build it these days. You can't fit five people in a small room with one, you know, men's room that's been leaking for, nobody wants to fix the faucet. And I'll tell you, as much as we want to kick Kevin Pecos around, one of the first, when I was on the CIP, his first thing was recommending, put new roof on, new windows, new doors, button it up. And we almost kicked him out, saying, why would you invest in a dump? And he says, because that's my job. So we went through that era. You know, I can't take much more of the negative stuff. The professionals are saying, it's got to be this way. You know, at some point, we've got to say, you know, we've got to get our act together and put a good marketing, a sales pitch, and get it through town meeting. If not, we're going to be revisiting this again. You know, we went through, and you guys did a nice job sending it out. I thought we were going to get ten responses, I was surprised it was three. And I asked you, you know, were the two more that you got throughout because they didn't meet the requirement? This is it. If this is the best we can get, we're going to be spending, you know, sixteen million dollars to rent something versus, you know, eleven on something that we own. It, it just doesn't make sense to lease for twenty-five years. If we only did it for five years, these prices are going to be even more because nobody's going to invest in a five-year lease agreement with the town. It just doesn't work that way.
Well, the RFP was written, though, so we could walk after year five.
Correct.
So, you know, we, we effectively could take any one of these for the value for the first five years and then walk out of there.
But we're also walking.
As a temporary.
Yeah.
Who are we going to walk back into, though, Bill?
I have no idea. But to answer your question, your initial question as far as the, the building committee goes, the, you know, our charter is to do basically what the board of selectmen or any given body wants us to do. You asked for our opinion, we've given you our opinion, we've hired consultants, they've given you the same opinion. But in the end, if you told us to build the, the building upside down, we'll build you the building upside down.
Bill, I think my point was, though, you, you asked our opinion, unanimously we said we're going to go in this direction. Town meeting voted it down, and, and there's reasons for it. We've got to figure out.
It had a majority of one, but we, because of the funding mechanism, you know, we needed two thirds.
Well, yeah, but the thing is, James, are you all set?
Uh, yeah, for now.
You know what, I'm a little disappointed that the lease option didn't work out, just for a temporary fix for our people. I really am. I thought we could find something, relocate them for a year or two, get through this process, and go back to square one. It didn't work out. So you know what? The town was misinformed, we did your work again, and like Jim said, I would have walked away from this, too. So you know what? Now we're going to move on again, okay? So my, I agree with Jim. Let's go with the new town hall again. My question to you is, are there any grants available? Because that's floating out there, too, that we can go to the historical, we can go here, we can go there. That's all floating out there.
There's nothing historical.
There's nothing historical about it. I've had, I know it's nothing with the schools that's involved. So there's no other funding out there other than?
Not for Brooklyn Water.
Yep.
If you were a library or a senior senator, there's grants.
And I've had.
In schools, in schools. But for town hall, towns are expected to take care of their property. You know, there's no, there's no private group saying, can we use your town hall if we give you this money, like the MBL or something like that?
The reason I bring that up is because that's exactly what I just stated publicly, and, and other people are making different statements. So clarification, you're the professionals in here. We own the building, that's it, we're on our own.
There's three buildings in this town that don't really qualify for anything. DPW, Joint Public Safety, and Town Hall. Everything else has a, if you will, a, a big brother behind it. Libraries obviously have the State Library Board, and that's where they got their thirty percent in funding. Schools obviously have the MSBA as a grant funding source. Again, you have to go through their process and, and you can move forward. But, you know, when you look at, at, you know, these other three, there's, there's really nothing that sponsors them on the statewide level.
Which also shocks me, the fact that we're held to a higher entity when it comes to paying, pay scale and other bidding, the bidding process for the whole job and the prevailing wage thing, and we're still less. And if you do that math quick in your head, Randy, you get twenty-two thousand square feet or seventeen thousand square feet. We should be twenty-five percent more still in labor cost than other projects, and we're not. So, once again, your number's right on the money.
Well, don't forget, we're not, we don't need to make profit. They have profits.
Right. After, I want to, so I'm going to go, once again, with the same thing. Lorraine wants to speak, and then the board's speaking, and I got a couple who are waving their hands out in the audience who want to speak, so.
So just in terms of the whole funding of this and, you know, hopefully getting support from the town at a town meeting, if, assuming the whole municipal, the inter-municipal agreement for water and sewer goes through with all, with Mansfield, and we're ready, we could reignite our efforts with the Town Asset Review Committee to get ready to dispose of those properties, and that could help contribute to lowering the amount that we would have to fund potentially. So, you know, I, I just throw that out there, that we would, we would have the ability to work on that, between that, and also looking at the legislation, the special legislation for the recreation building, to see if we could get that through this town meeting. That would, again, maybe give us the opportunity to bring some funds in.
Just a, but you know, cautionary note, I know we, you all recall, we've tried that approach before, you know, multiple funding sources to try to solve this, you know, financing equation. I think ultimately, you know, those properties will be sold, you know, and the town will realize, you know, significant dollars, whether it goes towards the town hall debt service or the next school debt service. I, I guess what I'd hate to see happen is that the town hall project gets delayed pending sale of other property when we know we're going to have other buildings that ultimately are going to, you know, reap the benefits of, you know, whatever proceeds we get.
And when, you know, you know.
You're right.
But that's a good point, Lorraine. It will be used towards, if we earmark that money for future, you know.
I mean, if it's ready in time, great.
Right. But the other thing is, the finance plan was in place.
Right.
It's still there, really? It's still there?
Yeah, we've got, just to refresh, you know, we have currently two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, earmarked at the annual town meeting for, you know, lease and related costs. Obviously, if, if we're not going this route, we're going to reduce that number on town meeting floor. So there's, you know, 250 that's freed up. You know, we also had, you know, some furniture fixture money in the capital budget, obviously we wouldn't advance that. And then we balanced the budget, you know, with a, you know, with a cushion that gets us, you know, close to 400,000 without the process, you know, the state budget process settling. So, you know, there's the, there's the starting point for to pay the, you know, the debt service that we were talking about.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm addressing Jim's concern as well. I've been on various committees now to look at whether to start the Space Needs Committee, just, or just evaluating town hall now for 17 years. I've seen this thing go down in flames so many times. And it doesn't matter if it's this board, the previous board, or the board that comes after you. We allow ourselves to be distracted by our naysayers, and we go off on tangents. It's been like five boards before you, always the same. We have to stay focused. We can't listen to our naysayers. They're out there, and they're just going to bark away. We have to move forward with this thing. Now, if you want to build it where it is now, wonderful, but we have to just keep moving and make this thing happen soon. Again, 17 years we've been pushing, so it'll always get, a couple more years, a couple more years, a couple more years. We've got to stop it now. You can do it.
The only thing I would add to what Bill just said is something you've heard me say before. You do have an appointed committee by your board, the Permanent School Municipal Building Committee. I think as you all know, they're incredibly capable group. They've delivered for you some fantastic buildings, the library, the public safety building, the high school, the Ahearn, the same group. So I think they, you know, they are more than capable of managing a project like this, and certainly they've vetted this project multiple, multiple times. So it's just a little frustrating, you know, when there are ad hoc committees that are not officially sanctioned, that, you know, receive the same sort of weight as the committee that you have actually appointed. I'm not saying that they don't have any right to public input, absolutely, but you have an appointed committee, and, you know, they're resolved on what should be done here.
Because you might remember that the town hall was also part of the project when the public safety building was to be built, and was pulled at the last minute because the board at that time thought, with the addition of the town hall, it may pull that down, and that project had to go forward. So, as far back as 10 years ago, when that was...
2004.
Yeah. So it was supposed to be done at that time.
Okay. All right. So I think the board says peace, everybody. Why don't we put this back on the agenda to reconvene, the 13th of May?
Is there any disagreement on the board as to which direction you should go?
We've been unanimous on this, both boards, for going on two years.
So is there any particular action that we should take the board?
Well, it's too late to go to town meeting.
No, I'm just saying, is, I think the committee here is looking for some direction as to how relations should proceed. So I think if it's the pleasure of the board, based on what I'm hearing you say tonight, that you'd like to pursue the town hall at the existing town hall location, then I think if that's your, that's your direction, then they'll, they can then, to help start that process and proceed that direction.
Because technically, we should go back and release these three and say that, you know.
Anybody have an issue with not saying that? Okay, everybody here agrees, the same location?
Release them, but if we go to town hall, we're still going to need a temporary leasing for a couple of years, so there's still an opportunity for some of these, or other ones to come back. I don't know if it's a separate RFP, but...
Yeah.
Bill, did you say before that you wanted to get on the road to negotiate a reduction in the square footage?
What I said was, if you, if you felt that the lease option, based on what you're seeing for numbers, made sense to you, we have the right to go back to whichever one you say and try to negotiate it further. But again, to the point being that we're far enough out of the range, it's not a slam dunk, so.
When I was visiting, I think it was Rainham, they would be doing their town hall, it's been done for a couple, this is a couple, many years back, they had a different department in every part of the town, made it very inconvenient to go pull a permit, and they had to visit every department, you know, but that's what they had to do for a year and a half. I mean, that's another option, but other than that, I think you got a direction from the board here. Dick, you have something to say? Add?
Yeah, if I may. I don't know where your bike is now.
Sit at the table, maybe?
Want to sit here?
Yep. Thank you. Let me just welcome the new town manager. I'm sure he may want to close his door when I show up at town hall from now on.
No, no.
But anyway, welcome to the town, and hopefully it's a changed situation. I think we've heard a lot of good points this evening, however, there's some problem areas that just don't gel in terms of what is here. You know, Randy put together some excellent numbers here in their report. Unfortunately, the new building on South Street, those numbers are two years old. Let's recognize that. There's no inflation and escalation built in on these, which we have had in all of the correspondence and emails that we forwarded to you. That project is 13 million now, whether you like it or not. And there's one other factor that no one has addressed as part of this issue. DPW is now a town hall. They're going to have a separate building, so.
We've talked about this before, Dick.
That comes now as a budget, a separate budget, instead of solving the town hall problem. That million dollars is because the DPW is being moved. If they stayed in this building, would that million dollars be necessary? The answer is no. But do you have the space for it? That's a whole different argument, but I'm saying.
No, no, I need to interrupt you for a second. We just discussed that every department has to get together and go over this whole process to decide how much area they need, and maybe the water is involved with that, and maybe all the other departments are involved with that. We haven't got to that point.
But this is the point that we have been talking about. We had scheduled a meeting November of 12 with your board and AdCom to go over the whole process. You all recall, Kevin walked in and said, oh, we got the post office.
I'm not going to go back. Dick, Dick, we've got new information on the floor here. I'm going to be very respectful, and anybody can say any different thing they want out there. We just had a great discussion. The facts are the facts, that we, you wanted a lease option, we had looked at one prior to that. I directed the town manager at the next day after town meeting to find a lease option and get the people out of town hall. That has not come to fruition. Now we're back a year later to square one. If you want to have discussions on what you think is important to the new structure or anything else, tonight's not tonight. I'm just saying, we got through the night here where we don't have a lease option. That's the way we got it. Whether you agree with the numbers, two years old, today's numbers or any of that, that's not the night for this. The night for your discussion is when we go forward and try and figure out the size of town hall. We already know the location, the guidance is here from the board. Does anybody on the board disagree with this? All right? Do you think this is not the time to have this conversation? Does anybody disagree that?
I think it's important for Dick to present his information to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, because that's who really oversees these projects for the town, and I think that's what has gotten out of hand in the past.
May I please? We've been through this now for three years, three and a half years.
Exactly why I don't want to go through it again, Dick.
All I'm saying in effect is, I didn't point out the lease issue, as you just said, that was Bob Hickey.
No, it was John Spinney and yourself at town meeting, I was there.
I didn't bring up the lease issue. It was Bob Hickey, and if it was Spinney, then it was him. All we did is mention that the lease that people have been talking about, from the estimator in our group, was off by some 400%. It's only off by 200%, but it was still high. Let me just get to the effort which I think all of us should be concerned with on this. It isn't just a new building. It isn't just a lease. It isn't just renovation. There's a whole series of issues tied in here, which we don't have on the table and should be on the table. The total cost of revising the town hall includes the DPW, whether you think it's a separate issue or not. They're there now. To solve that problem, that million dollars needs to be added to any budget that we put together on this.
I did not say, just for the record, I did not say that they don't all belong in the discussion or in that building, that you said they're there now. What I said is, if they want to be, stay part of the town hall and not build their own structure, which came in a little over budget from what they were trying to bring in together, I think it was a million, close to a million, instead of 600,000 last year, okay? This whole process will start again. That's what I'm saying.
If I could suggest, though, you issued an RFP on the lease. Where did the specification come from for listing of the rooms? Can you answer that, Bob? Where did those rooms' square footages come from?
It came from the...
KBA?
Yeah, it came from, it was the result of the program requirements exercise that we went through that KBA coordinated. So that those were the space numbers.
Why is it 27% higher than KBA's numbers? Your area asks for more than 450 square foot more than the original town hall.
I don't think that's the case, but we'd, you know, would have to sit down.
I can identify it.
Dick.
All I'm saying is, there's a whole series of things that are changed, or continue to change, or we are not given. I think what we need, and this is my strongest recommendation, is to get back to that meeting that we talked about, AdCom, yourself, building committee, and whatever, and discuss the whole scope of the project, and not decide, as you people and the building committee have, since KBA said the cost was the same, and we all know that estimate was off by $3 million.
No, I don't know that. I don't know that, Dick. You make all these accusations, you make them here and you make them there, and I don't have the facts to substantiate that that's true. How can you just openly say it's $3 million over budget?
Wait a second. Did you check the estimate?
Dick, I don't agree with your numbers, so.
About 8,600 square foot versus 71.
We had a special meeting here at this school.
It's a million dollars.
All right, that's it, we're moving on. We had a special meeting at this school you were part of, and everybody here was part of. We had that whole debate openly, and we all disagreed with your numbers at the time. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm not going to let this get dragged down tonight. Another night, we'll have the discussion, okay?
Then we have a general public hearing and have the whole thing on the table, and not just the new building, not just the lease.
We decided, we've gone back and forth with this like a seesaw. We've gone from a lease option to renovation, to new construction, and now we've gone back to a lease option, and now we still need a lease option to move the people while we build. This board and that board, once before, voted unanimously for new construction. I'm in the trades, too. James is an expert in the trades. We all have experience, too, Dick. We disagree. We politely disagree with you. And if you can't accept that, I'm sorry.
We disagree as well.
Thank you. Okay, moving.
Two points of clarification.
Yes, please.
I believe the DPW director is planning to bring forward the modular space approach for the DPW headquarters, again, for the fall town meeting. And it's, that is their goal, is to have everybody housed at the same place down on Elm Street. And just for the record, there is $1.1 million of contingency built into that, the build-new number, and we've actually, Bill and I've had, and Bob have had this discussion, and these guys know best, you know, they believe that the costs, you know, have not gone up where it would be beyond the numbers that we projected.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to action. Thank you, everybody. John, could you handle the action as usual?
We've got, how many action items? 19.
40. I approve the whole action list at once, John?
Motion to approve?
Okay, the first item is town committee appointment renewals. These are all renewals effective May 1st, 2004. We have a long laundry list of renewals, which I'm not going to read the entire list.
Thank you.
But I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen renew all the folks on this list, with the exception of the personal wage board, which we will discuss at a later time.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve a vendor fair on the common sponsored by the Foxborough J.C.'s for May 17, beginning at 7:00 a.m. and ending at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number three, Boyd and Library. I move that we accept a gift donation of $350 for the purpose of annual renewal of Providence Children's Museum Library Pass donated by Kenneth M. Olavitz of 26 Elm Street in Foxborough. Thank you, Mr. Olavitz.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Next, John?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen, here it is, item number four, move that we accept a gift to the Board of Recreation. The donor is the craft organization. It's for the use of the Gillette Stadium Field, and there is no dollar amount.
Dodgeball tournament?
Yeah.
The mother-son.
Annual.
Annual, okay.
Got a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, John?
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the resignation from the Recreation Board of Judy Norwood, effective immediately.
Second.
All's in favor?
I think just for your own information, Judy's been on there for some 20, maybe even 30 years, so I can just recognize her long-term service to the town.
Thank you.
And then there's also a request.
Next. Number seven. No, same, sorry, yeah, she up town.
Yeah, that's the next one, yeah. Yeah, okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen change to full-time on the Board of Recreation Jeff Downs from an alternate member to a full-time member.
I'll second that.
All's in favor? Okay, John, you're going to go back to number six, right? Joseph W.
Yep. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Joseph W. Keen of 11 Windsor Drive to the Playing Fields Committee Soccer, effective 5/1/2014.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number eight, please.
Okay, I move that the, you already did that one.
Number eight.
I move that the Board of Selectmen grant the used car dealer's license, class two, to Alliance Rental Group. The date of issue is April 22, 2014.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Number nine is another gift acceptance. I move that the Board of Selectmen accept a gift on behalf of the Boyd and Library in the amount of $3,875, whose purposes were 2014 Museum Pass Program renewal of passes to Boston by foot, Boston Children's Museum, the Isabel Stuart Gardner Museum, Museum of Fine Arts Boston, the Museum of Science, Mystic Seaport, New England Aquarium, Plymouth Plantation, and Zoo New England. And this donation is given by the Lakeview Pavilion Charitable Foundation of 45 Lakeview Road. That's a very generous gift, and thank you very much.
Second.
All's in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Next, John?
Okay, number 10, move that the Board of Selectmen grant a coin-operated pool table license to the Foxborough VFW 2626, doing business as the Foxborough VFW 2626.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
Two copies of this.
There are three licenses.
There's three licenses, okay, so I need to amend that to three licenses.
Three tables, yeah.
Hey, item number 11, move that the Board of Selectmen accept a hackneyed license application by Richard Saliba of 301 Buckminster Drive, number 106, Norwood, Massachusetts.
Second.
All's in favor?
I'm sorry, is this a renewal or a new one?
I believe it's, Richard is going to be driving for his brother that owns the business that's located at 132 Cochasset Street. That's Tony Saliba.
That's Tony Saliba.
It says it's new, it's checked off as new.
Is that a new taxi company?
No, no, no. He's going to be driving for...
Tony Saliba. I know the family. You probably all know the family, but...
Look at the second page. Second page is checked off, no, the top page isn't for some reason.
Okay.
Next, John.
Okay. Bob, could you give some color on this one?
I think it's just for your information that the chief was going to be attending training, one being the RX Drug Abuse Summit in Atlanta, which is today through Thursday. The cost of the conference is being paid by the DA's office. He's part of the leadership team, and in June, he's also going to be attending the NFL Trainer Program in San Diego, and he's just providing fewer information on approval.
Okay. We don't need to take any action on this.
I think you should just vote approval for him attending the conferences.
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen approve Chief O'Larry's attendance at the RX Drug Abuse Summit in Atlanta, Georgia, beginning today and going to the 24th.
Second.
And then the annual... No, as well as the annual NFL Trainer Conference in San Diego on June 15 to June 17.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, John, 13.
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen on behalf of the Foxborough Planning Board accept a grant given by the South Coast Rail Fiscal Year 14 in the amount of, is it $15,000?
$15,000, yeah.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 14, John, please.
This is another renewal, and I move that the board of selectmen renew a Hackney license application by Mr. Roy Kufel of 53 Gray Wolf Drive in Franklin, Massachusetts.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Under, just, there was one item on here, it says, has your right ever been suspended or revoked? And it says, yes, too lengthy to explain. I don't like, if there's a question, yes or no, and if it's too lengthy to explain, why put it on here?
I thought it said no.
It says yes.
Yeah, it does say yes.
Happy to do so again, but, you know, another minute to have written it down, a little offensive that they don't, and I don't know this person, but if it's been suspended, write the reason why or...
I think he, he's a renewal, and I think he's reviewed this with Chief O'Larry, and Chief O'Larry signed off on it again.
If he wants an explanation, James, he can come back next week if he wants, tighten that up to the 29th.
Okay.
I saw the no. I'm sorry, I didn't see the yes. Okay, so we'll hold that one to next week. All right, next.
Okay, 15, I move that the board of selectmen renew a Hackney license application by Mr. John Frederick, and I cannot read that last name.
Zadanski?
Okay. Of 101 South Avenue, number 17, Attleboro, Massachusetts.
Yeah, on that one, it doesn't say with cab company he's working with.
It doesn't say the cab company.
You know, all the others always list who he's going to be working for.
Let's tighten that one up, too. Next.
Okay.
16, John.
And I move that the board of selectmen approve a bicycle race to be held on June 22, 2014, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and this is sponsored by the National Multiple Sclerosis Society.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5:00. Okay, John, 17, please.
I move that the board of selectmen accept with regret the resignation of James F. Oliver from the Southeastern Commuter Railroad Task Force, effective immediately.
Second.
With gratitude, alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for serving. And 18, please.
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen on behalf of the Historical Commission accept a donation worth $1,000, and this, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's a gift, but it says grant.
There's four, John. There's four gifts acceptance on that same one.
Okay, it's a gift of $1,000, $500, $100, and $100. This is for the restoration of the soldier statue on top of the Historical Commission building.
Can we just, I know we accept, recognize the people that donated it because they're sizable amounts, resonance.
The first donor is the Rotary Club of Foxborough for $1,000. The second donor is John C. Fuller, 135 Rob Reed in Brookline, Maine, Brooklyn, Maine, for $500. The third donor is Carolyn M. and Paul F. Godin, 151 South Street, Foxborough, in the amount of $100. And the fourth donor is Dask Realty Trust, Donald Cosgrove trustee, post office box 42 in Foxborough, Massachusetts, for $100. And thank you very much, they were all very generous donations.
Second by James?
Yep.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's great.
Minutes?
Oh, I didn't see the second page. Go ahead.
Yep. I move that the board of selectmen accept the board of selectmen's minutes as written, or as amended, did you amend it?
As amended.
As amended.
You're supposed to bring it up.
For October 29, 2013, November 5, 2013, 11/26, 2013, January 7, 2014, January 28, 2014, February 4, 2014, January 11, 2014, and March 4, 2014.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5:00. I guess that's it.
It's a signing.
Yep. I guess tonight was our new town manager, Bill Keegan's, first night, full-time, first day, full-time with the town.
And I lasted, I lasted the full day.
And he's still here. And welcome, Bill, again.
Yeah, thank you. It's great to be here, and I'm really, really happy to be here. I, I'm glad not to be working between two towns anymore, but it's, it's been great. Everybody, the town hall was great. Everybody I met today has been terrific. I still have a lot, a lot of people to meet, but my calendar's filling up fast, so I'm looking forward to serving with you all.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Bob, for everything you did.
Bob did a terrific job. I, you know, I can't say that enough.
And I'm very happy to have you.
And Bob, absolutely, thank you so much for serving this community this year. And I don't think the extra money was worth it.
Well, you know, it's been a very good experience. I learned a lot, and, you know, I'm just happy to help the town out, and I'd be just as happy to help Bill out as much as he needs. I'm not planning on going anywhere, so I'm there as a resource or whatever he needs from me, so.
I gotta say, there's very few people that I could have picked that has the institutional knowledge, the professionalism, the way that you handle things, and there's been a lot of stuff that's come our way in the last, since you've been appointed interim.
And we're also talking, so that's a good thing.
That's the magic of it.
Thanks for everything, Bob.
Thank you. I appreciate your, you know, believing me enough to put me in that position, so.
All right, good night, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Motion is... Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Lorraine. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.